Hello! Is this thing on? Hey, hey, hey! Ladies and gentlemen, lovely people! Welcome, welcome, welcome to the stream! Wrong button, Jesus Christ! What is going on? Here we are! Here we are! Hey! Lovely peeps, welcome, welcome, welcome! And, uh, welcome again! We are back! We are back! I am a little bit red, as you can see, but... We are doing really well! Uh, thank you for the follow! Iraqi Gamer! Thank you, thank you, thank you! Folks, gals, sugoi! Welcome to the stream! BiteMartin! Today we are co-working and studying OBS. That is right. That is right! Okay, professionalism is what we're all about on this stream, so let's do this! There we go, there we go! Being professional? Oh, baby! Ah, there we go! Ah, perfect, perfect! Alright! So! Now that we have finished being professional on today's stream... We are gonna start with studying some Kanji as always! We're gonna move on to some Anki! After we have done with Anki, we're gonna try and introduce it to yet another comprehensible input channel this time around. It's gonna be by a recommendation of one of viewers. And finally! If I do not feel absolutely atrocious... I... I'm kind of having a little bit of a heat stroke... We might attempt to play Ace Attorney. We might. But I'll, I'll, I'll get back to you on that. I've... Overdosed on heat last couple of days. Jakinta, welcome! Welcome back to the stream! Hi mates, says Jakinta! How are you? Just thinking of learning some of new Japanese words? And interestingly, you're working on Japanese? Cool! Absolutely! I am doing very fine! Thank you so much! Apart from... Having splitting headache and probably... What resulted from a heat stroke? Overdose of heat yesterday, but, you know... We will persevere! We will persevere and come out... Hopefully... Better on the other side. Yes. But yes, uh, we were doing this twice a week usually, but this week it's only once because I was away in Ireland. Who would have thunk that Ireland would be this hot? Nobody, nobody in the, in the... The universe! I was at hot over in Ireland too! It was absolutely atrociously badly hot! Um... Actually, it wasn't as bad as here. It wasn't as bad as here, but it was pretty bad. It was pretty bad. Um... I mean, pretty bad? I wouldn't say pretty bad! It was actually very nice! Uh, the thing is that, uh... The... My brother, who was giving me lift everywhere... Us, lift everywhere... Uh, his car doesn't have an air con. So it was basically like baking ever so slowly in an oven. So yeah, I, I did not come out unscathed after that. Also, you shaved your beard! You look even younger than before! Ah, Jakinta, I've shaved my beard quite a while back! Quite a while back! But yes, I have! I have! And, uh, of course, I am only getting younger with every passing moment! So, absolutely, I'm looking younger! It's like, uh, what? Is it the, the, the Curious Case of Benjamin Button? Is it? Kind of like that. It's fairly nice and breezy up here, but seems, seems quite bad down in England. Yeah, Manchester is, uh, pretty bad today, but not as bad as, uh, being cooked up in, in, in a car in the middle of a highway was, so that was okay. Right. I'm not, I'm not moaning, people! I'm not moaning! Right! Shall we get started? I think we shall. So, as always, uh, what we will do is, we're gonna, we're gonna... Start with Kanji. So, without any further ado... Without any further ado... Let me actually... There, there is one adieu! The further ado, I, I wanted to ask you. I meant to ask you, and specifically BiteMartin, but anybody else who, who is following me, uh, all the time... How is your Japanese going? Now, the reason why I'm asking BiteMartin specifically because I know that it's been just over a month now since you've started studying BiteMartin? So... Yeah, how, how do you feel is your progress? I'm really quite curious to hear that. That's before we start in Kanji. And with a bit better light, you can see how red I am. Oof! Oh, but yeah, um... Ireland was fine! It was really nice! It was nice to see the family! Nice to celebrate my mom's birthday! Good, good to spend some time together, you know? On that note, I've been playing a couple of games with Japanese dialogue. English subtitles still, new games I want to still understand, and I'm picking up several words I recognize now. Very cool! Very cool! What games were you playing in, in Japanese with English subtitles? Uh, one thing I will say, and this is, um... Not to kind of stop you from doing that. Uh, doing that, that is fantastic, of course! Uh, but one thing I will say is that, uh, if, if you're playing, uh, games with Japanese audio but English subtitles, I, I wouldn't treat it as a, uh, part of your Japanese studying. I would more treat it as, uh... Kind of like a bonus, uh, just basically chilling out, playing the games. And maybe as a bonus, picking up a word once in a blue moon. Uh, the reason why I'm saying that is that... If... Watching anime and playing games with English subtitles would increase your Japanese skill, then all the anime and JRPG nerds would be fluent in Japanese. Nobody is. After years upon years of playing they, or, or listening, they might have, watching. They might have picked up a word or two. So, I do not treat it as your, uh, study time, but treat it as just what it is, uh, just relaxing time. Oh yeah, I know they don't match up! It's not learning experience! It's more of a "hey, I recognize how this is different from, to the subtitles!" Yeah, absolutely! Absolutely! And actually, talking of, uh, that, that thing that you shared with me? I have completely forgotten to, to do anything with it! I have completely forgotten to look at it and download it, so... If you could leave it up until tomorrow, I would really appreciate it, and, uh, yeah. I'm, I'm a little bit under the weather today, yeah. Thank you so much! Appreciate it! Alright! Ladies and gentlemen, lovely people! Pull up your chair! Grab your favorite cold drink! And your favorite Japanese study material! And let's get started! I will shut up! And we will, uh, wrong button! Very wrong button! There we go, I don't know what's going on with me today! Uh, but we will start studying Japanese! I promise you, we will! Alright! Hahaha! Uh, is there any trick to understand Kanji letters while looking some significant signs? Like, gives you clue what the letter sounds like? Alright, that is actually a good question! Before we start with studying Kanji, I will, I will address that question. Alright. Uh, so... There, there is a subset of Kanji. And let me... Let me go here. There is a subset of Kanji. Maybe even this would be better. Uh, there is a subset of Kanji that... Would give you a hint on the phonetic part of things. However, that is just a part of Kanji, uh, all, all the Kanjis in existence. So, I think it's about a third of all the Kanji, uh, follow this rule? So, which is a significant part, but there are two-thirds that don't. Alright. Uh, but, if we look here, so this is how I learn the Kanji. And, uh, we are on 181, but let's go back to 1, because this is easy. This is, uh, kind of should be kind of self-explanatory, right? So Jakinta, if you look at the screen right now... Uh, there, there are a bunch of things you'll see, but let's, let's look at this, uh, Kanji here, right? So, the first thing you should know that there is no circles in Kanji. All the Kanji, any circular object that the Kanji might be, representing is represented by a square, or some kind of square. So, this Kanji here means a sun, a day. Japan, okay, yeah, Japan as well. So... The easiest way to learn the Kanji is to kind of do it through mnemonics. And this is an example, like, an, an example of that, so... They're saying, uh, so Nichi, or, or He, depicts the sun with a line drawn alone. It's equator, like here. It also means a day, as well as Japan, is an abbreviation for Nihon. In the didactic vocabulary, know the symbol "this", uh, which means repeat last character, thus, uh, Hibi equals Hibi, right? But, so this, this is kind of one of those things where you, you try and create a story, so you know that all the circles represented by the square, so this is a square with a line drawn across the equator. And, this is a day, or sun, or Japan. Uh, the issue, of course, is that that has, gives you no clue for how it's pronounced, and it can be pronounced as Nichi, it can be pronounced as Jitsu, He, Bi, or, well, uh, yeah, Bioka, it ends on Bioka. Or, yeah. So... With Kanji, while the meaning of Kanji, it's easy to learn through mnemonics... The pronunciation is better learned as part of a word. So Arohi, for example, is one day. So... You could say, "Yeah, but why, why is it not pronounced Nichi, Jitsu, or Ka?" And it's just the way it is. That's, that's the best answer I can give, is just the way it is. So, the, the, the top, uh, here, pronunciations is Onyomi, and the bottom is Kunyomi. The Onyomi pronunciations come from, uh, imported from China, and the bottom ones are Japanese ones. So, a rule of thumb is, if you encounter kind of two Kanji together... A kind of like this... Uh, usually, they would be pronounced as, uh, in the Chinese way, and if you encounter them with Katana, or Hiragana, Hiragana, Radun, Katana, they'll be pronounced the Japanese way. However, of course, here, uh, it's not really two Kanji together, they're the same Kanji repeated, and that's why they're pronounced Japanese way. But yeah, so that's, that's really the primer... I'm, I'm, I'm really being scatterbrained here and not going into specific details and giving you more examples, because, really, if you decide to study Kanji, whenever you decide to study Kanji, and don't start Kanjiing before you start studying Japanese, by the way! Learn by listening first and Kanji written system later. Uh, but this, this is, kind of should give you at least a little bit of interest on... Interesting tidbits on how the Kanji should be, uh, studied, and we're gonna be switching to here now. Alright. And I'm pretty sure... This is where I left off, yeah. So Jakinta is saying, "So if it's one single column, uh, blerm, Ain means sun, and if you make it like top-left corner is day, since those three elements are based on the word sun, you may think about letters may have resemblance of sun." In Japan, it's called Nippon, I think it's English, is rising sun. Uh... The, the, the English, so... The English translations are not necessarily correct. Alright. So... The rising sun might be the rising sun. Uh, but if we look here... Yep. Or, actually, if you look here... Let me, let me go back! Let me go back! There we go. So the, this, this is Nihon, right? So the first Kanji is sun, or day, or Japan, technically. But the second Kanji means buk. So it's nothing to do with rising in any way, shape or form. Uh... Nippon? It can be read as Nippon as well. But that doesn't mean that changes the meaning of the Kanji, so, yeah. I'm not quite sure what, what you mean when you say "top-left corner". Um, if you could clarify that. But, yeah, so... Oh, the 1-2 numerals in the example! Right, right, okay, 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 no devil! You mean 1-2? Uh, this is just the stroke order, so that, how you should be writing it, so 1, 2, well, 1, 2, 3, 4, right? So that's, that's how your stroke order should be, because there is a very particular stroke order in the way that you should be writing the Kanji, and yes, stroke order does matter. Because, if you write them really fast... If you're doing the correct stroke order, they will make the Kanji appear a certain way. Uh, yes, poppy! I refuse to pronounce the name the way you spelled it! You should stroke it, absolutely! Is 1 numerals, uh, means like you do only 1 means sun, or... No, 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 no! So the whole thing, 1, 2, 3, 4, is just... The, the, these numerals do not correspond to these numerals, right? They, they have nothing to do with each other. So these numerals just means that this is the first meaning, the second meaning, and the third meaning. Here is the order you should be writing the Kanji in. So first you write this, then you write this, then you write this, then you write this, right? So these, uh, do not correspond to these in any way, shape or form. They have nothing to do with each other whatsoever. Yeah, uh, so... Uh, but, uh, talking about the stroke order, if, um, if you write it in the correct stroke order, and when you start writing things fast, what that me, what that does, it, it makes your characters all look, even if they're written very, uh... Like... Cursively, let's say, uh, in a very fast manner, they would still look more or less correct. So that's why the stroke order matters, uh, in Japanese, even though a lot of foreigners, of course, do not get the correct stroke order, and it kind of messes things up a little bit. But anyhow, anyhow, right! Uh, let's actually get in and get some studying done! So, ladies and gentlemen, lovely people, what I will do now is, I will shut up! And I will go... And start, actually, learning Kanji. So, pull up a chair, uh, grab your favorite material, study in Japanese, and let's study together for the next, uh, I don't know, 10, 15 minutes, until I'm done with the Kanji, and then I'll be more than happy to answer any of your questions. Uh, okay, I'll, I'll match up some preview on Kanji first, you probably did progression a lot so far, so just will watch it. Yeah, Jakinta, absolutely, absolutely! Uh, but, I, I, I would, so, if you go to my YouTube, uh, because I know you're writing on Twitch, if you go to my YouTube channel... I have a number of videos on how you should study Japanese, and while I don't necessarily agree with what I have said before, uh, I've made a video quite a while back now, about six months ago now... I would still say that this is one of the ways you can start studying Japanese, and you'll be fairly well set. So you can go and check it out, and, uh... Yeah, but, uh, if, if you have any questions on how to study, uh, go ahead and ask, but I will answer them once I finish doing this page of Kanji. On that note, I'll shut up now. Let's get studying!
Alright. So, we are done with Kanji. That wasn't too bad, was it? Wasn't too bad at all. There we go, there we go. We're gonna move on to doing Anki now. Uh, but Poppy is saying, "What N level do you think you are at?" Poppy? So, GLPT is extremely bad way of gauging your progress, because really, the only thing that it does test is pretty much reading and how well you do on... Well, multiple choice question test. That's pretty much its standout features. It does test some listening ability, but it is not overly hard, uh, from what I understand. Now, I have not taken an GLPT test, and while I might need to take a GLPT test, uh, N1 or N2, uh, for the purposes of work, uh, going forward, I would not be doing it to gauge my level. I would just be doing it because I must. However, to answer your question, seeing how GLPT level primarily stresses reading, I would say I'm hovering roughly around, I don't know, N4 in reading, uh, with GLPT. However, again, it's extremely bad way of gauging it, because I'm not learning the required Kanji for N4 level at all. I'm just relearning the Kanji in general and reading a lot. So... In my listening comprehension, I am probably around, I would like to say, N1 level more, in terms of, uh, how I can recognize native speech. In terms of the amount of vocabulary, I know I'm probably N3 going on N2 right about now. I hope that answers your question. Do not gauge your progress in Japanese by GLPT. That's a better answer. Alright. Uh, Bite Martin was saying that one of these songs sounded like Final Fantasy XII. There is nothing wrong with Final Fantasy XII songs. Come on, man. Um, I've actually never played the XII. I have given it as a gift to my brother for his birthday when it first came out. Unfortunately, uh, we have found out that it wasn't a good game afterwards, but yeah. Uh, Bite Martin is saying, "From looking up that sort of thing before, I think those ask for N2." If you're talking about jobs, uh, there are a variety of jobs. Most of them would start from N4, uh, for pretty much menial jobs that you don't really need a language, basically, so that they can explain to you what to do and you do it. To N3 for kind of like, uh, blue collar jobs, so, you know. For example, I was doing, um, I was being a daiku when I was in Japan. So, that's carpentry. And you really needed N3 level for that. And N2 levels for more skilled work. Uh, so, we're talking about things like, you might need to be able to read, um, emails and/or send documents, etc. But not, um, you're not necessarily using that all the time at your job. And then N1 for pretty much any business work. Yeah, no problem at all, Poppy. Uh, I forgot the name of the visa I was looking at. I'll have to check that. I think it was Engineering Humanities, that kind of thing. Uh, yes, so for the visa specifically, you're talking about the highly skilled individuals, I think, visa? So if you're talking about that, I can't remember the exact name of the visa, but it's something like Highly Skilled Professional, Highly Skilled Individual Visa. That requires you to have N2. Yeah, so if you're looking to get that visa, that's what you should be aiming at. Unfortunately, of course, if you're good at taking tests and if you primarily concentrate on reading, you can pass that fairly easily and still not being able to understand, uh, more, or pretty much 90% of what the native Japanese would be telling you, like speech. So... But that's their only way of gauging your proficiency level. There are better tests, but they're not... They do not carry any weight outside of, you know, specific circumstances. But yeah. Uh, so, am I, is my current focus reading and listening? Uh, yes. Uh, so, um, Poppy, my... My partner is Japanese. Unfortunately, we kind of... Because her English is better than mine. So, uh, because we kind of started speaking in English, we've been conversing in English for the past 13 years. So... It's very hard to kind of try and switch to Japanese and speak in Japanese. Um, so for now, I am just doing the immersion of, uh, primarily listening. And I've only recently, in the last couple of months, started reading a lot. And by a lot, I mean to about... So out of the four hours, four, because my immersion is about 45 hours in a day, or my Japanese learning, 45 hours in a day. So I do about an hour of reading to about half an hour of Anki/kanji studies to, well, about two and a half hours, two and an hour and a half of listening. So listening is definitely primary way of me learning the language right now. For sure. Uh, Bite Martin is, uh, he's still talking about the visa, not the one that needs all the points, no. Oh, I don't know, man, I... Uh, free-flow listening? Yes. Uh, so I... Jesus, hold up. Kitty says hi. It's getting reasonably close to his eating time and he's, uh, very vocal about it. But yeah. He's extremely vocal, Kitty. I found it Engineer Specialist in Humanities International Services. Yeah, I have no idea about that visa, Bite Martin, so unfortunately, I can't comment. The one that would apply to me is the spouse of Japanese nationals, so the easiest one to actually get anything done with. Alright, fair enough, fair enough. Uh, so, Poppy, um, a free-flow listening or, or... Yes, so it's a free-flow listening. I... Step one, marry Japanese person, swear to God. Um, yeah, so, so the way I listen is, um, I do not... I try not to look anything up. So, I might look up a word or two, just in case if I don't understand the whole sentence that has been spoken. But primarily, I just try to listen and make sense of what has been said. Of course, that involves me listening to a lot of content that is just above my level. So... While I do about an hour and a half, uh, in the evening, I watch Japanese drama. So at the moment, I'm watching Amachan. So this is Asadora. And, um... It's a little bit above my level, that. And by a little bit, as in, it's a bit... I understand anywhere between, um... In some instances, 90%, but usually, it's about 80% to about 60, 50% of what's going on. Uh, the main culprit of me not understanding there is, they speak with either Tohoku band, so Tohoku accent, or Iwate band specifically. So Iwate is in Tohoku. Uh, but, um, I think it's... Think it's actually more Iwate band than just general Tohoku band. But anyway, uh, so, because they speak with a dialect, that makes it very difficult to understand. But so I do listen with Japanese subtitles. And that's what, uh, makes it much more understandable than it would without it. So that's, I hope that answers your question. Uh, as for reading, I look up every single word, because I read just above my level. So, I am currently reading A Little House in the Woods, in the big woods. So it's by the same author who wrote Little House on the Prairie. And yes, this has been translated to Japanese, so I'm reading Japanese version of that. Marcus, welcome, welcome, welcome. And actually, there we go, just so that everybody can see that you said hello. Well, hello there. How you doing, Marcus? How you doing, bud? Uh, we're done with Kanji. We're just about to start doing, uh, Anki, but as always, we do have quite a few questions from everybody involved, which is great to see. Uh, so yeah, I'm just answering those. So yes, if you do have your questions yourself, uh, do shout, and I will answer them just before I start doing Anki. Ah, Krasimir! Welcome, welcome, welcome! Welcome to the stream! How, how is your Japanese learning going, guys? Oops, sorry about that. Because, uh, you know, I'm talking a lot, but I do usually forget to ask how is everybody's progress. And if you're struggling with anything and maybe want to share it, or if you have any triumphs that you want to share it, go ahead, share in the comments. I think it's good to see both in the comments and maybe, you know, I'll try and help on anybody else who might have been there, done that, and encountered the same difficulty, might be able to help you as well. Watching your video, nodding a Furigana to an Anki deck, I run into a dead end with Kaishi 1.5K deck! Ha ha! You mentioned in the comments that you're using it. Do you remove anything to make it work? So... What, uh, what is the issue? So you've followed the steps and are you not able to see Furigana? Like, what's happening? I need a little bit more, um... I need a little bit more information, Krasimir. Uh, Marcus is saying, "Really busy at the moment, so 3-5 episodes of anime and about 2-3 hours passive listening to podcasts." That sounds like a lot of time still! Uh, that's, even though it's really busy. So 3 to 5 episodes of anime would be about, uh, what is it? About 20, 20 minutes, 25 minutes each, right? So that would be between an hour and roughly almost 2 hours, an hour and 45 minutes or so of anime? Plus the podcast, that's a lot of time, man. That's... Uh, you want to do more? Well, that's good, that's good. Uh, the worst thing you can do is like, feel like, "I'm just doing too much. I don't want to do it, but I must, I must." It means you're burning out and doing too much. But yeah, if you want to do more, that's fantastic. For me, yeah, I'm kind of, I do about an hour-ish. Usually about 40 minutes to 50 minutes, uh, of podcast listening while I run every morning. And then I listen to, of course, I watch the Asadora, as I said, Amachan. So, yeah. Uh, if you'd like more time, I know, I know it's, um, kind of very low-hanging fruit, but what I found... What I found, uh, that works for me is waking up a little bit earlier and going for a walk or a run. So I run usually, and I listen, as I said, to about 40 minutes worth of, uh, Japanese while running. So, it's good for health, it's good for Japanese. Oh, yeah! But yeah. Should you eat from chopsticks from now on? You should only sleep on the floor, only eat Japanese food and only eat from, with chopsticks from now on, because if you don't, you will never learn Japanese, ever. Hontonohanashio? Hontonohanashio? Usojane? No, it doesn't matter what way you eat. If it motivates you, yes, it's important. If it motivates you to sit down and eat with chopsticks and you're like, "Oh my god, I want to study Japanese", eat with chopsticks. But eating with chopsticks will not teach you any Japanese, right? Apart from motivation. Especially soup. Uh, well, Bite Martin, you think you're making a very clever joke, but actually, we eat soup with chopsticks. Uh, so what you do is, Japanese soup is eaten in a small bowl. And what you do, you have, unlike a lot of French, English, and American soups which are blended, these soups are not blended. So you have your broth, and then you have items like meat, like tofu, like, um, wakame, for example, mushrooms, etc., floating in a soup, like chunks. So you pick those up with the chopsticks, and then you take the bowl and you drink from the bowl the soup. And that's how you eat, like, for example, miso shiru, right? Miso soup in Japan. So you thought you were making, you were making a joke, but actually, that's exactly how you should be eating soup. Anyway. Uh, Krasimir is saying, "Nothing happens when I point the mouse." Alright. So, Krasimir... Have you followed all the steps? So for example, because I am using the deck, right? I mean, I'm not using the deck anymore, but you know what I'm saying. So if we go to preview... Uh, is the preview not actually... I don't know, it is doing what's supposed to be doing, right? So you're not, you're not getting the little, little pop-ups like this, do you not? So, there could be a variety of issues there. So without actually, you know... Yeah, so without going in and checking everything, uh, here are a couple of things that could be, um, could be the issue, right? So if you go to manage note types, and, uh, let's see, where is the... Uh, Gabajebas, is that? No, Kaishi 1.5K, right? So if you click on that and go to... Cards? So, at the back, you have to have this, right? So, specifically Ruby RT color, whatever color you want it to be, text decoration, right? So this has to be there. The front template and the back template should have Furigana, word Furigana, alright? So that's... Furigana has to be everywhere. So for example, Furigana sentence Furigana for the sentences, Furigana word Furigana for the words. It has to say Furigana... Sentence Furigana, right? So I don't have it actually set up on the front, because I decided that I don't need it on the front. But if I was to do it at the front, I would type in Furigana, Furigana, word... Furigana. So it has to correspond to the actual names of the fields on the card, right? So without that, like it's very hard to troubleshoot without me knowing exactly what you have done and not. I guess he missed the back, yeah, yeah. So the back only responsible for the back, the front is responsible for the front, but yeah. So... And of course, don't forget to save, alright? So and the... When I say it has to correspond to the name of the fields, these are the names of the fields that I mean, right? So for example, word Furigana is the field here. Sentence Furigana is the field here. So that's what I mean when I say it has to correspond exactly to the name of the field, including the capitalization of the letters. So sentence should have S as capital, Furigana should have F as capital, and etcetera. So like I can't really do much more here without, you know, doing step by step with you and yeah, I'm not gonna be doing that on a stream, I'm afraid. But I hope that that has helped you at least, start you on a right way to troubleshoot your problem there and hopefully, gonna get that sorted for you, man. Alright. I'm gonna ignore all the questions for the next ten or so minutes while we do the Anki, alright? So let's get started. And you do your Anki, or enjoy watching me doing it, but yeah. No more talking. よし、頑張るぞ! I forgot to say, hold up. Alright. Somebody asked us to be banned, so we banned them. We obliged, we obliged, alright. How do you read this? さあ、この、なるほど。かおじゃない? かおだよ? Okay, that was a little bit hard. あずかる、なるほど。Hey Chihiu, how you doing bud? Hope you're doing good. How's your studies going? Yeah, BiteMartin, I don't get as many spam bots anymore. I think the low hanging fruit, of course, as always, are games, so that's where they congregate, for sure. Chihiu, yes, I do have Discord and I know that you retracted your message, but it is in the stream description. Ah, yes, yes, so if you check the stream description, there is an invite link there. I'm kind of, I'm a little bit um... I'm a little bit neglecting the Discord server right now. Too many things going on to develop it fully properly. But I'm hoping that, you know, once we have enough people, I'll start adding a bit more to it. More material, maybe try and get kind of like reading challenges going, or watching challenges going, things like that, that could be really cool thing to do together. So yeah, but for now, yeah, it's a little bit quiet, but yes, the Discord server is in the description of the stream. 満足じゃない? そうだよね, that was hard. おしゃ、なるほど、行こう。あややややや。せーせんかな? うむ? しゅーせんする? かな? ほくせん? 生まれる? せんじゃなくて、さんだよね、さん。せーさん? うむ、しゅさん? さあさん、なるほど、なるほど。同じだべえ。どい、どうじょ? どいつ? どあんじょ、どこ? どこ? なるほど。ほ? ぶく? ぶこ? いこ? あー、なるほど、なるほど。はい、はい、はい、はい、はい。あー... わからん、やっぱり。Still more value highly. しょう、なお。あ、なおのこと、なお。なお、なお、なお、なるほど。なおまた、なおさら。しょうそう。しょうぶ。この方がなおよい。なお一層悪いことだ。なるほど、はい、もう一度。せんさい、うん。出世する。おくさい、生まれる。だよねえ。なおのこと。なおまた、なおさら。なおそうかな? しょうそう、しょうそう、なるほど。はい。おこ。どうしょ、どうしょ? The name of the deck is KKL-C Deck, Anki Deck. Give me a sec, I'll share it with you. So the deck is supposed to go with the KKL-C. And KKL-C stands for Kadansha Kanji Learning Course, by the way. And I've linked it in both chats, actually. Both YouTube and Twitch, in case if anybody else needs it. So do read the description of the deck. The description is important because it governs quite a few different options and tells you how you should use the deck best. Furthermore, it should really go with the KKL-C Kadansha Kanji Learning Course, which is this, which I was doing before, because it doesn't actually have mnemonics for you, right? So it only has the reading, the stroke order, and of course, the example words, but not the mnemonics to remember the Kanji. よしよしよし。できたぞ! Alright. Ladies, gents, lovely people. We are not pressing the correct buttons today, but we are. We are moving on to our third part of today's stream, where I introduce you to a comprehensible input channel. Today's channel is recommended by one of the viewers. It was not on my radar, well, it kind of was, but I written it off as too easy for me. I have since refined the assessment because they actually do a variety of different levels. But without further ado, I think I shall show you what the channel is. かぶるい? It is Japanese Super Immersion Channel. So Japanese Super Immersion is cool in two ways. First of all, they span a variety of different levels from very, very basic, I would say N5 level. So maybe not complete beginner, right? You gotta be able to look at the two dudes talk without any visual cues and be able to figure out what's going on. So it's not suitable for complete beginners, but N5 should start figuring out. Super Immersion sounds better than regular immersion? Absolutely, absolutely it does. But yeah. I watched this, this is very fun for beginners, absolutely, yeah. So N5 level up, I would say up to about lower intermediate. They don't speak too fast, but the cool thing is that this is a conversation, right? It might be a little bit scripted because, you know, they choose a topic, etcetera. They probably think what they want to talk about. But the good thing is that the conversation itself is a fairly, even if they speak a little bit slower, it's fairly naturally flowing, alright? Which is very, very important. So if you are interested in the channel, we're gonna be watching some of it now, but if you're interested in the channel, go to YouTube. In the stream description, there is a link to sub to them. Sub, and of course, watch, they have six hundred and eighteen videos. I think they have live as well, yes, they do, which are longer formats, like an hour-ish or so. But today, we're just gonna be watching one of their normal videos, right? So not an hour-long conversation, it's gonna be, I think, like a ten-minute conversation. Right. So on that note, we're gonna stop the muzak as the muzak is not needed here. We're gonna switch to here. And yeah, we're gonna just start listening and I hope you enjoy this. So they do have baked-in subtitles. That they are Japanese subtitles, so that is good, but they're still baked in. I would prefer not to have baked-in subtitles and use either YouTube subtitle feature or better still, the ASB player feature. But baked-in Japanese subtitles are not too bad. Right, I will shut up now. And let's listen. Ten minutes of comprehensible input starts now.
こんにちは。
こんにちは。
こんにちは!
わざわざとはわざわざっていうのはそう。やらなくていいんだよ。けど頑張ってやっちゃったこと。わざわざ、わざわざ。ではやってみよう。宮崎さん。
ちょっと待ってね。How was the sound volume? Because I feel like the sound is a little bit low. Would you like me to up it for the video? Actually, I'm just gonna up it anyway because I think it's quite low.
これお土産。わざわざありがとうね。
いいの、いいの。
本当にいつもね、ありがとう。
えっ、いいの? わざわざごめんね。
いいよ、いいよ。
なるほど、わざわざ。
そうそうそう。
ありがとう。
いいよ、美味しいから食べてね。
うん、ありがとう。
そう。
どこまで行ったの?
北海道。そう。
それは災難だったね。Hai, eitho ne, kyoo wa hamburger? Tsukurimashita?
Soo nanda?
Hai! Dozo! Ona ka hatteru de sho?
Ah, ona ka? Ipai da kedo? Ma, um...
Yo yo! Wazawaza tsukutan da yo? Isshou kenmei, boku wa?
Wazawaza tsukutte kurete arigato! Kedo? Ona ka ipai nanda yo nee?
Ya, chou, hamburger wo? Tsukuru te itta jya?
Saaki, gyudon tabe chatta?
Asa kara? Wazawaza junbi shite? Yatta da yo? Takedo!
Imo onaka ipai da?
Takedo!
Takedo! Yaki ni?
Omoshroi na?
Hai, Miyazaki desu.
Ah, Toriyama desu kedo?
Hai!
Ah, kono mae no? Omiyage? Arigato nee!
Ah, iye, iye, tonde mo nai! Wazawaza denwa shite kete kurete arigato nee!
Iya, 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 mo! Zenzen, zenzen!
Sonna ore nan te ii no ni? Wazawaza denwa shite konakute mo?
Iya, hontou nee? Ano, uchi no kajoku mo? Minna yorokonde ta kara?
Um!
So, ore shiyou to mo tte sa?
Sonna wazawaza ii no ni?
Um, ii no, ii no, ii no!
Hontou mo ne? Kore ijo ii kara?
Matar kore de ne? Matar? Tsugi oaishimashou?
Um, ja, ja! Issuren shimasu! Hai, hai, hai! Kyoo okure chatta, gomen nee?
Ah, zenzen ii yo!
Matte te kureta no?
Um!
Sonna wazawaza matte kurenakute ii no ni?
Iya, ma, 30' grai dakara? Zenzen, ho yonde ta shi?
Saki ni, omi se haite te kurete yokatta nda yo? Wazawaza mata nakute mo?
Um, ya, issho ni haeri tai jya?
30' mo kureta no ni nee? Wazawaza, machi sugi janai?
Iya, iya, hon toka yonde ta kara? Yuigi na? Jikan wo soge ta yo?
Arigato nee!
Ashita? Campu ikujan?
Um!
Ashita? Ameppoi nda yo nee?
Marji de?
Soo! Moku nanka? Wazawaza? Mo, campu setto, zenbu katta nda yo?
Ashita no tame ni?
Soo, tento mo? Isu mo? Ato? Barbeque no konro mo? Wazawaza zenbu soroeta no ni sa?
Wazawaza?
Ashita, oawame?
Um! Ja, dekinai ne? Wazawaza katta no ni? Mo, donmai da nee?
Donmai?
Donmai!
Ja, ashita nani shouka?
Um, wazawaza katta shi? Doka? Yane no aru toko de? Yarou kana? Campu?
Sodan nee, wazawaza kattte kurechatta shi? Tsukaitai yo nee?
Um! Ja, ashita wa, sonna kanji de yarouka?
Sodan nee? Are? Toriyama san? Kaitai denwa kaita?
Um, kaita? Natarashi no ga? De ta kara sa?
Eh? Kowareta no? Mae no yatsu wa?
Um, kowarete nai kedo? Natarashi no ga de ta kara? Suu katta?
Kowarete nai nara? Wazawaza kawa nakute ii jya?
Iya, natarashi no ga attara? Suu kaitai kaechan da yo?
Wazawaza katta? Moittainai jya?
Ma nee? Moittainai no wa wakaru ndakodo? Ga man ga dekinai nda yo?
Boku nante, 10' kan kaita nai yo?
Um, marji de? Sore wa kaita hoga ii yo? Urui yo? Mo, kaitai paka paka shiteru jya?
Sodan yo, kou da yo?
Gara paku?
Sore wa?
Hon ne?
Um, kawo yo?
Hai, hai! Wazawaza?
Hai!
Kitekita no, yoku?
Soo, wazawaza kitekimasu yo?
Ah, ii desne? Wazawaza kimasu, boku mo? Ki nakute mo ii no ni?
So, ki nakute mo ii no ni? Eh, minna ga kattte kurette no shinjite? Wazawaza kite imasu?
Wazawaza? Kiteru yo ne?
Soo, wazawaza te? Yaranakute mo ii no ni? Gamba te yaru koto?
Na!
Fushigi na koto ba da yo ne?
Um, nanka, aratame te kiku to? Wazawaza? Nanka, hen na koto ba da na?
Shika mo? Wazawaza? Te, onaji bun ga 2 tsu aru jya?
Um!
Onomatope mitai da yo ne?
Ah, tashika ni, zawaza?
Onomatope? Janai no?
Soo, soo, soo!
Wazawaza? Demo? Kore wa onop... Onomatope de wa nai kara ne?
Um! Nante sa? Wazawaza? Ore? Waza? Ikko ni suru to? Imi nakunai?
Imi wa nai?
Imi wa nai?
Waza nara aru ne?
So, waza?
Waza?
Eh, robotta punch!
Eh? So ka!
Ga waza?
Soo!
Sore wa waza?
Koutetsu no elbow? Koka ne?
Shineng no? Hado?
Naka, kore ga waza?
Sono waza ja nai kara ne?
Sodan?
Sono waza ja nai ne?
Nan nan daro ne, kono koto ba? Wazawaza?
Um!
Demo? Ore shiur toki toka ni mo tsukau shi ne?
Ma, sore ga ichi banoi njanai?
Um! Eh, wazawaza yatte kureta no? Gomen!
Soo! Nanka? Arigato nee? Wazawaza yatte kureta nda?
Um! Naruhodo, naruhodo!
Toriyama san no okusanga? Eh? Oheya no soji toka?
Hai, hai, hai!
Osalo warattari?
Um!
Ofuro soji shitari? Teyouno wo shita toki ni? Yuun da yo?
Yowai?
Yotte mite?
Yowai? Zannan?
Okusani? Ah! Itsumo? Ne, wazawaza arigato nee? Yowai?
Yowai?
Otari mai?
Yutte hoga ii yo?
Ya, watashi wa? Okusani? Shi... Shoto shi? Wazawaza yatte kurete arigato? Te, yowai mo? Yitekunai?
Shoto wa yarana? Ii koto ja nai kara?
Hmm?
Shoto wa yarana kia ikenai koto da kara?
Naku, sen taku soji mo yarana kia ikenai koto da yo?
Ah, so nando?
Sodan yo, otari mai jya?
So nando?
Otari mai! Se ne yo?
Na?
Nana?
So ka?
Shoto da yo? Shoto, shoto, shoto!
Wazawaza?
Wazawaza ja nai yo?
O sake wo tsukutte kureta?
Oh!
Um! Achi ga? Itsumo, oshoto, okuro sama? Hai, dozo? Um, te, o sake wo tsukutte? Wazawaza arigato nee?
Naruhodo, naruhodo ne?
Sore da ne? Shoto ikaen no koto da ne?
Sodan?
Ucha ne? Ah, akumademo? Uchi no kajoku wa desu kedo? Hai!
Chotto megane kashite?
Hai!
Koyota sa? Fuite ageta sa?
Ah, naruhodo, wazawaza arigato!
Fuite ageta yo? Teyouni?
Nani wazawaza? Nani? Naru? Shai, shai, shai!
Wazawaza fuite kurete arigato nee, de sho?
Wazawaza? Chotto mo? Ah, te naru na, sore wa? Nande futa no?
Hai, tayukoto de? Eh? Kyoo no douga, wazawaza de shita? Minasan mo ne? Kore wo tsukatte komento shite mite kudasai?
Hai!
Mo, ne? Kikataku nakute mo? Kaitte kudasai? Wazawaza kaitte kudasai nee? Hai! Tayukoto de? Tsugino douga de? Ii deska?
Hai! Oaishimashou! Wazawaza!
Arigatou gozaimashita! Otsukare samadee! Minna! Otsukare! Alright, so yes, if you have liked what you have seen, go to their website and subscribe! A really, really quite cool duo of dudes! And yeah, they, they... The good thing, really good thing about this is that the conversation, and of course, they are quite funny if you have... I don't know how much you might have understood, but they are really quite funny and... The conversation is always gonna be much more natural than somebody just talking to the camera like I do. But of course, I'm not a native Japanese speaker, and I rarely speak Japanese, so yes! But, yeah, a very, very cool channel, go and check it out, so unfortunately, I haven't checked out a lot of their stuff, only watched a few of their videos. Just because, yeah, time is limited, of course. But, all of them were really, really cool, and if you have understood what wazawaza is in these 10 minutes, I think that was time well spent, and you owe them a sub. There you go, alright! Enough of me shilling for somebody else's channel! Even though I'm eternally grateful for them producing the content. But Chihiu is saying, "Speak Japanese naturally, I think this channel is recommended too." Yes, "Speak Japanese naturally" is 100% recommended! It is my favorite channel to watch, just because I really, really like... Well, first of all, I really, really like the area she usually walks in. It's kind of like Vlog, a walking, talking channel. And I've featured it many times on this... Um... On the streams, but I think I will be doing it a disservice if I keep featuring it, because of course, If you like the channel, you shouldn't be watching me watching the channel, you should be going and watching it yourself and subscribing to it. I wouldn't want to be taking viewers away from the original creators. The idea here is to introduce new channels for you to immerse with, and not make you immerse through me watching it. So, yes, do and go and subscribe to all these channels that you're seeing here. Alright, uh, so! Lovely people, um... I think today, we are not gonna be doing Ace Attorney, I'm afraid. I am still having a bit of a headache, and I do apologize, we will be cutting the stream a little bit shorter than normal. But I hope that today was useful for you, so if you have any questions right now, shoot! And I would be delighted to answer them, if not, then we're gonna wrap it up.